All right.
You all ready? Staff is ready? Call the meeting in the Kerrville City Council, July 9th, 2024. Meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Let's start with invocation and pledge of allegiance led tonight by Councilmember Delane Seigerman.
So if you'll pray with me. Thank you for the opportunity to peacefully meet together this evening to discuss issues, make decisions, listen to the public, consider what is best for Kerrville. Help us to carefully consider all of these issues. Be with those who maybe have damage or be without power tonight due to the most recent hurricane and bring them some very quick relief. As always, we need more rain and will probably always need more rain. Protect our first responders and those who put their lives on the line every day for us to be safe. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements of community interests. Stuart.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to everybody tonight. We do have a few announcements. Sometimes I sound like a broken record up here talking about all the library events, but they do have a lot going on this summer. So I'm going to go real quickly through them for youth events this week. We've got, actually, this is through the end of July. We've got Storytime, Calm &amp; Color, Adventure Time, Callow Shows, Lego Club, Family Movie, and Awards Pizza Party, which will be July 31st. The Callow Show tomorrow is a magic show, so we encourage everybody who wants to come to come out for that. They also have quite a few adult events and Peterson Health Lecture Series, the new one that starts tomorrow. Book sales on the 10th, 13th, 17th, and 24th. Several book clubs throughout the rest of the month. Movie Chat this month is The Man Who Would Be King. I don't know who's seen that, but it's a great movie. That's Michael Caine and one of my favorites, Sean Connery. Stretch and Relax Yoga on July 20th. Get Crafty on the 20th also. And then if you have questions about Medicare, which I do, July 24th. So be sure and check those out. All right. It's hot outside and the Senior Services Advisory Committee will be handing out some free fans this Friday at the Louise Hayes Park Pavilion. Let's see, they'll be handed out on a first come, first served basis. They're going to start handing them out at 11:00. They go to noon. I don't know if they're going to last that long because we're already seeing some demand for it, but they will be, like I said, on a first come, first served basis. Fans were donated by Lowe's, Home Depot, and Gibson's. So we encourage everybody who wants to check that out to come on by. The Senior Service Advisor Committee acts as an advisory board to the city manager and city council. And if you want to know more about them, you can visit them on our website. We're always looking for volunteers to serve on there. So check it out. Take the survey. This just came out today. We are updating, we're in the process of updating the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan, which includes a downtown plan and a Nimitz Lake area plan. We're seeking everybody's input on that. You can reach that survey through our website, through our Facebook. One step and you're there. Answer several questions. We will really appreciate whatever input we get. And as that survey goes on, and I think it's through August the 5th, and then we'll be putting out the results of it. And I look forward to having as much interaction as we can get. So take the survey. All right. And something that we are really excited about, we're going vertical. We've been, we had the foundation for quite a while now, but we're finally going vertical on walls. And here's just a brief look at it. That was yesterday about 2:00. This is how far they've gotten. So a lot of progress out there. Like I said, we're really happy to be in this and have it going on. I think we're trying to move in next June. So it's coming along.
Stuart, the chief is smiling.
Yes, I know. I think both chiefs are smiling too. And Charlie's probably smiling somewhere here too. All right. And that does it for me, but thank you.
Thank you. We have several presentations today. On the first one, 2A, I have asked Councilmember.
Before you do that, can I do item of community interest?
Please do.
That's all right. Kerrville Pets Alive, we are overrun with cats, kittens, and so Kerrville Pets Alive is going to be doing an adoption event at the mall this Friday and Saturday from 11:00 to 5:00 inside the mall, right outside of Belk's. And if you buy one, you get one free. So we've got lots and lots of cats. Buy one, get one free this weekend at the mall, 11:00 to 5:00.
Anybody else? I'm sorry. Okay. We do have a presentation to make to a group that executed a multi-agency public safety emergency. I've asked Councilmember Jeff Harris to help me on this because he is actually a participant. And if we could get those folks to come on down, that'd be great. All right. I don't want to just read. Come on up if you want.
No, he'll take this.
Okay. This is going to be a certificate of recognition for Lieutenant James Manchetta, Lieutenant Monte Johnson, Dr. Shannon Chapman, Darren Smith, and Randy. Who hit Darren?
There you go.
Close.
Close.
I know that. Jeff, tell us what happened and make the presentation.
So it came up at Rotary that they were looking for volunteer victims? Victims? Participants. And so at 7:00, we met over at the Summerland Music School on Shriners University. There was a group there that came up from Methodist Hospital and we all got, for lack of better terms, make-upd. I was a victim of a neck wound, so I got shot inside the neck and the back of my neck was blown out. I've got some really great pictures. Louis has seen them. I had blood all over my shirt. It was, so they came through. James McQuetta, Lieutenant, sorry. Lieutenant McQuetta is the one that spearheaded the deal, really. Took three months of his time to get this unfortunate training. I say unfortunate because unfortunately, we have to train for this now. We say it wouldn't happen. Well, it happened right down the road. So through his leadership and his training, we got this. They went in, eliminated the shooter, triaged, got everybody. The most critical, we're transported in police vehicles. Other ones were ambulances. And then we got to the hospital and that's when it really got interesting. Because I'm paralyzed, all I can do is talk, but I'm laying on a gurney getting wheeled through the ER, and there's real patients in the ER. And they see us. And they see one guy's got blood squirting out of his leg from a bullet wound. I'm laying there and the patients in the emergency rooms were looking at us going, oh my God, what happened? You know, take care of them. And they're like, no, it's part of training. We're sorry. But anyway, so thank you for leading that. And, you know, Randy, I know you were big in it too because you were there that morning talking to everybody. And, but anyway, it's, for their assistance with the organization and execution of a multi-agency public safety emergency drill conducted on the 20th of June at Shriners University. Kerrville Police Department, Kerrville Fire Department, Shriners University, Peterson Health, and Kerr County Sheriff's Department all coordinated a law enforcement and emergency service response to a mock mass casualty incident on the Shriners University campus. The drill was highly successful and much was learned by all participating agencies and civilians. Drills of this nature are invaluable tools in preparation for events these agencies all hope we never have to experience. Kerrville City Council is proud to present these individuals with this certificate of recognition and it's signed by Mayor Joe Herring Jr.
Thank you, guys. The thing about that training is they have to think about the unthinkable and they have to react to it. And we never want it to happen, but we want to be ready as much as we can. And I'm very, very, very grateful for your work.
Appreciate you.
Thank you very, very, very much.
And somebody got a coin, one of our chips.
Oh, good, good, good. Congratulations. All right. Pictures? All right.
All right. That's probably looking down.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, man. I appreciate it. First, actually, I knew of this training exercise is I get a picture from Jeff, who has been seriously wounded without an explanation. All right. We have another presentation. This is a Kerrville kindness recognition for Coy Koffer, Stuart Kunius, Martin Greenwell, and James Manchetta. Again, Lieutenant Manchetta, please come up front.
Get a photo.
We got some of them. Where's Martin? There he is. Come on up. Your hand behind her.
Hello?
All right, guys. A great staff, does their job, does it well, but these folks handled an emergency that was unexpected. They responded to a crisis as it unfolded here in City Hall. And Coy, would you mind telling what happened?
Okay. Well, I was on the phone as normal and all of a sudden this guy was talking to me and he was telling me about how excited he was and he was getting water and, you know, everything hooked up. And he went and sat in the chair and he was talking to me and I'm on the phone. I said, sorry, but I got to talk. I'll be getting brought back with you. And about 3, 2, 3 minutes later, all of a sudden, he just got real quiet. And I'm on the phone talking, so I can't say, are you okay? And so then I look over there and I can tell he's not okay. So I told the person I was talking to, I said, I need you to hang on just a minute. And so I put him on hold and I, y'all know how shy I am. And so I ran down to these two right here and I said, I don't care what you're doing, but I need you right now because this guy had passed out in the chair. And I couldn't tell if he was still breathing or if he was not breathing. And I'm on the phone with this customer trying to help, so this is where my partners came in. And then at that very moment, they went over there and I called 911 and they were asking their, you know, beautiful questions. And I said, I don't know any of that stuff. All I know is we need you here now. And I told them where it was. And then I went out to meet them because people come into a city hall, sometimes it gets a little confusing. And I'll let them take over what happened after that.
What happened after that?
We just worked to keep him, keep him comfortable and monitor his.
Make sure to check out the zone.
Just tried to keep him comfortable until the emergency services got here. And they got here quick.
Then our buddies got here and they were fast, fast, fast.
Officers got here very, very fast and emergency got here two minutes after him. So it was very, very quick.
What happened then? What happened then, Lieutenant?
They loaded him up in the ambulance.
You had a role too.
I just, I helped him and helped these guys.
But you had a T-train, don't you?
Yeah, just a little bit.
So you have some expertise in the field.
They took him from the chair down to the, you know, ground like they're supposed to do. And they did an excellent job like they always do. So, yeah. They took a team.
Basically, they saved someone's life. So on behalf of Kerrville, this is a Kerrville kindness award, which is a small token of the great work that you have done. And it's signed by all the council. And please say your name and how long you've been with the city and anything else you'd like to say, starting with you.
Coy Koffer, and I've been with the city for six years and I love it.
Martin Greenwell, and I've been with the city 10 years. And loved every minute of it and enjoyed it.
Stuart Kunius, been with the city seven years. Sound like a broken record again, but love, love, love working here. It's great.
Do you attend?
And James McQuetta, been with the city for about 17 years now. I like working with all these folks, so I've got a good, good crew.
Thank you for the round of applause. Thank you. All right. Thanks again. Thanks.
Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Our bonus.
Go away.
This is a gay word, right?
Thank you, Mark.
That's kind of scary on that.
All right.
Bye, Martin.
I guess not. Shelley, do we have any citizen speakers?
Yes, sir. We have three. Bruce Kreiser.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I can tell I'm in the right place because everybody here sure seems helpful. It's a great place. Anyway, I'm here because, like others, I have respiratory issues and we selected our home 20-some years ago. It was because of the clean air that's in the Kerrville area. But now the MegaCreed factory that's setting up concerns me. I have attended at least three meetings to hear about MegaCreed, all the way from last November up until about three weeks ago. And when their plant was first introduced, I spoke against the air environment pollution issues. And however, since there were no plans developed, I couldn't get any answers. The next meeting that I attended was at the Chamber of Commerce. It was regarding water usages. And MegaCreed didn't attend to that one, even though we were hoping they would. The last meeting that I was at was at the June 17th meeting at the Egg Barn where MegaCreed was supposed to present a synopsis of what they're doing. They didn't show for that either. Now, the application for their factory was submitted to the TCEQ on June 4th. So they must have developed plans in order to have that, that far along the road. Now, we've been unable to have a public meeting with a representative from MegaCreed. And right now, I represent 127 other people who also have concerns and who are asking for information from MegaCreed. And I'm here now to stand in for 127 of us. And we're asking for you, the city council, to please secure and affirm the accuracy of MegaCreed's plans so we can address the following six issues that we've identified. Number one is, could you produce a building plan with environmental study, setbacks, and elevations? Number two, can you give us some safety measures regarding the heavy truck traffic, the plant entry and egress routines, and the increased traffic on Peterson Farm Road? Number three, specify water usages. What's your quantity? What are your conservation plans? And how can you have a claim of zero wastewater? Number four is to identify all chemicals, materials, and components that are used in your manufacturing process. Number five would be identify emission points, the contents, the stockpile, and the dust control. Number six would be the construction that they're putting up in a floodplain. There's a stream that goes through the back of the property. Stormwater runoff and wastewater disposal. Remember, they have zero wastewater. So the cement factory is going to go in right across the street from where I live with about 28 other houses. And we're asking you, could you please help us get some truth and some facts about these people? And I've got 127 signatures here. I'll be happy to leave it with whoever would like to peruse with it.
Leave it with the city secretary.
And I thank you for your time.
Of course.
Thank you. Daniel Lowry.
Mr. Lowry.
How you doing?
Good to see you again.
Yep. I'm here again pertaining to 515 Elm Street, a private school. At this time, they are running an illegal daycare and five days a week. And the, I don't know how many kids are in there, but there's quite a few. And this public school or private school that's initiated and going on is, they set up a school once before illegally and have moved to this location. And I'm just wanting people to be aware of it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry.
Thank you. Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, Kerrville. I can't make the budget meeting Thursday, so I'm making my pitch for the street use fee. The current percentage is 4%. When it was initially begun, it was 2%. And that year, the revenue from that 2% exactly matched the revenue that was going to be received when the water rates went up. So my thought is that there's no dedicated fund on the street use fee. So if it goes into the city general fund, once, once it's there, how can there be an accounting for the amount of work done, the amount of money used, the revenue that's come out of the water department? This year, it will be over $600,000 again. Because the funds are co-mingled, I don't understand how we can use water revenue, which is supposed to be dedicated exclusively, I thought, for water issues and water infrastructure and wastewater, of course. And I don't know how we can combine that in the general fund and not have an accounting for a dedicated, a specific line item. I don't believe that was the, an action of that sort, I don't believe was intended when they said the monies or revenues would be used for water fund. And I hope that when you look at the budget this year, that that street use fee is removed and that revenue stays in the water fund and a lot of the issues or the planning for future water use will benefit from that. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. That is the end of the citizen speakers.
All right. There's some issues there that maybe staff can follow up on. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and can be approved on motion unless a council member asks for a separate consideration of item. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull 4B, just for some discussion.
4B.
Anyone else?
And Mayor, we do have someone signed up for 4B, just in case there were questions.
Good. Well, why don't we vote on the others and then we'll go back to 4B and have our discussion and have our citizen speaker. That work?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve items number 4A, 4C, and 4D.
I'll second.
Second? Whatever? Doesn't matter.
Brenda, seconds?
Sir.
All those in favor? So vote. All right. 4B.
So I've had the pleasure of working with Joe and Sally Phil about the Hill, is it Hill Country Farmers Market? Is that the name, Joe?
Heart of the Hills.
Heart of the Hills. Sorry, there's so many hard hills, you know. Anyway, if you haven't been there, they have three now downtown. You open at 9:00. I've had some fantastic heirloom tomatoes. I bought some bread. I've bought fresh basil. I mean, so Joe, I would like for you to just come say a few things about access to it, where you park, what the hours are. And it's really promoting our downtown and I think it's working, so.
I'll need your name and address for the record.
Name is Joseph Martin. I am the president of Heart of the Hills Farmers Market, Inc. We started the farmers market in April of 2022 in the parking lot of the River Hills Mall. We always wanted to be downtown, but it just didn't work out to get a location. So we never gave up on that, that plan, that dream to move downtown. And in April of this year, we met with Dalton Rice and Megan Folkers and they suggested several places. The one that most promised was that it doesn't have a name. It's the parking lot between Shriners One and the old Shriners Bank Building. We call it the Heritage Star Parking Lot because of the Heritage Star that you're familiar with, Mayor, there at the intersection. We opened, made the move on June 22nd. We had 715 customers come through that morning. That smashed every record we ever had at the, at the mall. Since then, we've had 400, 524 and 544 customers. Again, we're smashing every record that we've ever had at the mall. So we're very pleased to be downtown. I also negotiated with Shriners One, I never can remember, it's MDHH or MHTD, the mental health organization. They have let us, for a dollar, use their parking lot on Saturday morning for our vendors so that we're not taking up any parking places for any of the downtown businesses with our vendors. Our customers, I watch them, they leave our place, our farmers market, walk across Water Street and go downtown. And then I watch downtown people walk across and come to our market. We have, what we're on the agenda for is the use of the Dallas Story Boardwalk Pavilion. Not many people know the name of that thing, but that's the name. We, we have so far booked every Saturday, either a single musician or for the last couple of Saturdays, it's a duo, it's a duet that's set up and they're very good. I have watched the market, the pavilion fill up several times during the market from 9:00 to 1:00 are our hours. And I look over there and the whole, there's, every seat is occupied and there's people standing around listening to the music. I look up and it's, it's empty. Look up again, it's fill again. So I'm looking, I'm watching the pavilion fill up two or three times during our market hours. So I think we're being a real good contribution to downtown. We've done our best to be very good neighbors to all the downtown businesses. And so what we're asking for is, is a reduced fee for the use of the pavilion. And we use it for about two hours, maybe three hours. And what we have, one musician or two musicians plug in and use electricity. So we're not restricting, the public is still, in fact, they're using it more, I think, than they've ever used it before with the music going on down there. So I want to thank everybody at the city that worked with us and helped make it happen. And we're very pleased to be there.
Mr. Martin, can you, do you have any feedback from the, the local businesses in the area about your relocation to downtown?
I spent the Saturday before opening and I walked downtown and I met almost every business owner downtown, introduced the market. Their one concern was, were our vendors going to be taking up any of their parking places? So that's why I put it in overdrive and got with the, the mental health folks and got the use of that market. So I opened that market, the parking lot, I opened it at about 7:30 so our vendors that set up, they can park. And then once at 9:00, I close it. So public can't park there. And then I open it and I say I release them at 1:00. Once, once it's over, I go and open that parking lot and then they can leave. And once all of our vendors are gone, I close it back down. So I addressed the one concern that I, that I heard from all the downtown merchants. And other than that, they were very excited to be, for us to be downtown.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know if it drives more volume of traffic down downtown where it needs to be on the weekends.
That I can't address. Like I count my customers. I'm a little quicker. And I stand around and count everybody. I'm sure that I miss many people and I'm sure that I double count some.
Yeah.
But I do the same thing every Saturday, so I'm pretty accurate. We've got to be increasing the volume to downtown merchants. I'd like to see them open an hour or so earlier to take advantage of our folks.
I would go down there specifically for the farmers market. Otherwise, I wouldn't be downtown. And I think I'm not the only one like that. So I think it is.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Martin?
I know you've done a lot of work, so good luck, all the best.
I'm a busy man.
Yeah, I know you are.
But it's done. I really appreciate the help from the city.
Thanks to the city for your help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion then on 4B?
I'll motion, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute that agreement.
Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote.
Ready to go.
All right. It's unanimous.
Good.
All right. 5A. Shelley.
Ordinance number 2024-15, second reading. An ordinance submitting Chapter 70, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 3, electioneering at polling locations of the city's Code of Ordinances to revise this article as to regulations applicable to electioneering and other conduct on city-owned or city-controlled property being used as a polling place, containing a savings and severability clause providing for penalties not to exceed 500, ordering publication providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Mayor and council, there have been no changes since first reading and I recommend adoption on second reading.
Any questions for Mr. Hayes?
No.
Any discussion? Is there a motion then?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2024-15 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote.
I'll motion, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute that agreement.
Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote.
Ready to go.
All right, it's unanimous.
Good.
All right, 5A. Shelley.
Ordinance number 2024-15, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 70, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 3, electioneering at polling locations of the city's Code of Ordinances to revise this article as to regulations applicable to electioneering and other conduct on city-owned or city-controlled property being used as a polling place, containing a savings and severability clause providing for penalties not to exceed 500, ordering publication providing an effective date and providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Mayor and Council, there have been no changes since first reading, and I recommend adoption on second reading.
Any questions for Mr. Hayes?
No.
Any discussion? Is there a motion then?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2024-15 on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it's unanimous. 5B, Shelley.
Ordinance number 2024-16, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 30, Business, Article 6, Solicitations of the City's Code of Ordinances to revise regulations applicable to peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers containing a savings and severability clause, providing for penalties not to exceed 500, ordering publication providing an effective date and providing other matters related to the subject. We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Mayor, this is an ordinance amending regulation to the peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers as those terms are defined. It'll go into Chapter 30, Article 6 of the City's Code of Ordinances. And this ordinance will repeal and replace the previous ordinances we had in place with respect to these activities. I said this last time, the goals of this ordinance are to really clarify and simplify our regulations that we've had back into the late 60s. And I believe it does a good job balancing the rights of, you know, being in your own home versus those who want to go to your home to sell you things or to tell you things. And I think it's a very even-keeled ordinance and set of regulations. There have been some changes since the first reading. You may recall during the first reading, there was discussion of council. There were, there was input from citizens. And so, you know, I take that to heart and I listen. And I thought I could change with some minor changes, make it clear upon what I thought the, what the intent of the ordinance is. And so in the definition section, under canvasser and solicitor, I made sure, and there's very minor language change, but mainly with respect to deletions, but handbill activities are included within those definitions. And really what that means is if you're, if you're a canvasser, which you're going to try to tell people information, whether it's about your religion, your politics, you know, who you support, things of that nature, you can, you can absolutely give them or attempt to give them a handbill. Same with solicitors. If you're going to sell them the things and you want to drop off information about, about that, about that product or that services that they're going to get at a future date, you can absolutely hand them something along those lines. But I want to make sure it's clear that if you're just doing handbills, that's exempt from the ordinance. So in other words, if you're just wanting to go door-to-door and put information on someone's doorstep or in their, you know, somehow slide it into their screen door, that's fine if you're, really your intent is not to engage the homeowner or the occupant. And so we exempted that from the terms of the ordinance. Now, you still cannot go on their property 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And if they have a do-not-solicitation or words of that effect, you shouldn't go on their property at all, even if you're just doing handbills. Thirty, Section 30-183, Solicitation on Public Property, there seemed to be still some confusion, and maybe that had to do with the language. And so I really bolstered that this time. Once again, I've done it before, to make sure that it's, this applies to commercial activities. So again, if you're on a sidewalk and you've got signs for your candidate or signs for some, you know, aspect that you're promoting, that doesn't apply here. But if you're on the sidewalk or in a public place and you're attempting to sell people things, then yes, that applies. It's the commercial activities. And that's, I think it lays out very nice in that section what we're, what we intend. And then a minor change to Section 30-194, which is denial. So if you, if you apply for a permit because you need a permit, we made sure that the city manager's not involved in that process because the city manager may be involved in an appeal if you're denied a permit. And so obviously, we wanted to separate those two functions. So in a nutshell, that's really the only changes made to the ordinance. I recommend that you all adopt it on second reading.
Any questions for Mr. Hayes? All right, two citizen speakers.
Nikki Caines.
Ms. Caines.
Nikki Caines, I live in this city. I'm here again, once again, to stress the fact that a canvasser's main intent is to make contact. And even with the revisions in here, it specifically makes it unlawful for us to make contact. So I believe that this ordinance is missing the boat. We have tried and asked you to delineate, define, redefine the definition of a nonprofit. I understand you're saying canvasser or flyer. But if we, I don't want to just go put it in their door. Our whole intent is to make contact. And this revision just doubles down on exactly what the main intent of the ordinance was back in March when it was passed. You did make some revisions, but two weeks ago, when you revised the ordinance from March, there was no revisions offered online. It was not, a person had, reading it, had no idea what was deleted or added. We had to go through it personally, look at the old one and look at the new one. This one, even with the revisions, I believe, just continues to double down and tells us that we cannot make personal contact with anyone at their door, with or without a solicitor sign. It does not make any sense to a canvasser who is wanting to share their faith or offer some information about a political election. So I believe this whole thing is still missing the boat. Thank you.
Jane Rucker.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Mr. Hayes, Mr. Rice. Mr. Hayes graciously answered the questions that I had at the last meeting, and a lot of that was answered with the revisions in the bill. So I am Jane Rucker. I'm with First Baptist Church at Curville, 625 Washington Street, as you know. And so I just have a couple more questions. Mr. Hayes did clarify a lot of things. Couple of questions on the revisions. I see that you clarified the definitions of canvasser, which I appreciate that, as redefined in Section 30-178, which is on page one of Exhibit A of the ordinance. It seems to include churches and religious organizations who do attempt to make personal contact with the resident at their home because it specifically does say, a canvasser means a person who attempts to make personal contact with the resident at his or her home. So it is talking about canvassing and going to their, to make personal contact. It also includes the flyer or the handbill. So we do appreciate that clarification from the council and from Mr. Hayes. The revised definition of a solicitor on page two of Exhibit A also clarifies to mean it's someone who's going door-to-door specifically for sales, to sell something that they have, a service they have, which is not what the church is doing, obviously. But the last sentence of that paragraph includes a phrase that is still, some, it kind of muddies it back up again a little bit for me, and I just want to make it clear. It says, "Advertising services for educational, political, charitable, religious, or other purposes is considered a solicitor." So is it a solicitor or is it a canvasser or is it neither one? That's my question. Because it's still, I know you tried to clarify, and in clarifying, sometimes we get, we muddy things back up again. And so I just want that clarification. Is, are churches and church members, people going out to share their faith and share the gospel door-to-door? Are we or are we not canvassers? Or are we or are we not solicitors? Because if we're solicitors, then that poses another question. Okay, so if we're solicitors, in Section 130-182, which is the requirements for a permit and exemptions, canvassers are exempt from that obligation to obtain a permit. However, under that revised definition of solicitor, we may be considered solicitors. This council may not consider us solicitors. However, the language is ambiguous enough that a future council might actually consider us to be solicitors, and that's when we might have a problem. And so if we are considered solicitors, would we be required to get a permit? And if we get a permit, okay, does First Baptist Church get a permit? And that is an umbrella for all the members of the church that go out door-to-door? Or does each member have to go get a permit, which then places a burden not only on the members of the congregation, but it also places a burden on the city office that has to issue all of those permits, right? And so I just think that we ought to make it clear. And you may be thinking we're making a mountain out of a molehill, but I assure you, we're only trying to make sure that these ordinances are clear and they're concise and they're easily understood, not by just lawyers and people that have worked in that field, but every person in the city needs to be able to understand these clearly and concisely. And so the concern is this. Again, like I said, a future council may read this and decide you're soliciting. So I just need to see if we can get a clarification, whether that is soliciting or not. The canvassing has been, that definition is much better, but that is, it's just, it's difficult to share the gospel if you're thinking, I can or I can't. Where do we fall? Are we neither? Because really, I think as city council and along with city attorney, as you attempt to govern the citizens of Curville, which is exactly what Mr. Hayes said tonight and was also in his response to me, is the right, is to protect the right of citizens to their privacy. However, in doing so, there's a careful balance of not infringing on our constitutional rights of those same citizens to freedom of speech and the freedom of religion. Thank you very much.
Any response, Mr. Hayes?
Yeah. One, if, you know, there is, there is this balance that we're trying to capture here, and I think the ordinance does do a good job. If you're going door-to-door and you are delivering a message of your faith, that's a canvasser, clear and simple. No permit. Of course, you have to comply with the hours of operation, but that's, that's clearly a canvasser. If you're going door-to-door and your church is in the business of trying to make money and, which I would argue is a, you know, commercial activity, that's, I mean, that, then you would be a solicitor. And the church could go get, you know, blanket solicitation permit and cover the members that are going out and doing that. I was trying to think, as you were speaking, I didn't have an example, but I do remember at some point in my life, a, the church group going door-to-door. I didn't complain about it. I don't know if they, if they had a permit or not, but going door-to-door and trying to sell, essentially sell me something. So that would go into the realm of the solicitor. You would be defined as a solicitor and you'd need to pull a permit for that. But, but under the ordinance, canvassing, you know, door-to-door, this is my faith, this is what I believe in, that's no permit necessary.
The best example I could think simplistically would be is if you, as a church, and you have, let's just say, a music record, you know, with some music on it, and you give it to them and you're like, hey, you know, we're the First Baptist Church, we're doing this, and you hand them their stuff, it's good. If you go in and say, we're trying to raise funds and we want to sell you this thing to raise funds with that same disc, that now goes into commercial activity and then that changes the definition of it.
I understand that. It's just that, that, that last line of the definition of solicitors is a little foggy.
Yeah, and really think, think of it, commercial activity. And that's where we try to simplify it.
Right, and that wasn't the definition under solicitor, so.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, your mother said she was glad you were polite.
My mother attends a class, studies to a class taught by Ms. Rucker and others, and we review those classes every Sunday in hopes of edifying my, my spiritual training. All right, any other speakers?
Oh, no, sir.
She's, she's still trying. My mother is. All right, do we have a motion? Or let me, let me start over. Do we have any further questions of Mr. Hayes or staff? If not, is there a motion?
I have one comment. Just to Ms. Rucker's point in the solicitor, and it states in the bottom of the ordinance there, ma'am, distributing a handbill or flyer, advertising a service, or requesting a contribution is the solicitor part. So I think Mr. Hayes has done a pretty good job trying to outline the difference of handing out and talking about the gospel or selling a CD or something like that. So that's all I have, Mayor. And if there's none other, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2024-16 on second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It's unanimous. Thank you for coming. Please tell my mother hi on Sunday. She should be there Sunday. 6A, Ms. McRae.
Ordinance number 2024-17, an ordinance annexing two tracts of land into the corporate limits of the city of Curville, Texas. One property consisting of approximately 2.02 acres, generally located adjacent to and along State Highway 27, as it intersects with Peterson Farm Road. And the other property consisting of approximately 7.10 acres located adjacent to and along State Highway 27 and between the roadway and Peterson Farm Road. Such properties more specifically described in this ordinance, adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed properties as an industrial and manufacturing IM zoning district, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
My, thank you. Forgive an old mayor, forgetting your last name.
Hills Zenoni.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Yes, sir. So it's a request for annexation of approximately nine acres with industrial and manufacturing, manufacturing zoning. So this area in the yellow, which is the bigger area of the little weird shape, that's for the annexation. And that little green triangle at the bottom right, on the picture on the right, is for the rezoning in case 6B. So this is the current zoning. And then as you can see, the annexation, annexation area and is in the, whatever, the lighter purple or whatever color that is in the purple area is the rezoning. And so this is for, this is the current future land use. And it's in the, this is in the strategic catalyst area. And so currently, oh, not currently, excuse me, P&amp;Z recommended approval with a 3-1 vote.
Any questions for Nello Zenoni? All right, it's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. During night, I will close the public hearing at 6:46. All right, any questions or discussion? During night, if there's a motion, I'm happy to entertain it.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2024-17 on first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Passes unanimously. Item 6E, Mr. Zenoni.
Yeah, so this is.
Oh, I, I, as I read it in, I forgot.
Ordinance number 2024-18, an ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas, otherwise known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of the properties known as 575 and 601 Peterson Farm Road, from an airport zoning district to an industrial and manufacturing zoning district, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mayor Blackburn is in the audience. He made this look so easy, you know? A lot of little things, so I apologize for not letting that read here. Mr. Zenoni?
So this is the rezoning to, it's to, for the property from airport district to industrial and manufacturing. And this is the rezoned area. And that's the current zoning, so right now is airport district. And it is in strategic catalyst area 11. And the applicant Bruce Streaky is here if you need any questions.
Questions before I open the public hearing? Mr. Streaky, do you have any comments you need to make or want to make?
I'm glad to answer any questions.
I'm going to head up for the public hearing at 6:48. If I wait long enough, I could close it at 6:49. I don't know why I wanted to do that. 6:49, public hearing is closed. Any discussion or questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2024-18 on first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? During night, all those in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. All right, 7A. Let me see, just a moment. Who is going to actually, Ms. Barron, are you actually going to speak to this?
Yes.
Because you were listed earlier and I called the wrong person.
That was on us. We switched it on.
All right. Now, let, let's let Shelley read it in before I make another big mistake.
Resolution number 24-2024, a resolution, a resolution designating the Hill Country Community Journal, HCCJ, as the Community Journal, HCCJ, as the official newspaper for the city of Kerrville, Texas, providing authority for the city manager to act as may be appropriate, providing for an effective date repealing resolution number 31-2018 and any other resolutions therewith. We do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Thank you. Ms. Behrens.
Good evening again. So the city is required to publish certain legal notices by law within a local newspaper of circulation. And currently, we have a resolution in place designated in the Kerrville Daily Times back to 2018 as our newspaper of record. We recently went out for bid and requested bids from both of our local newspapers for, for them to submit promosals based on our average ad sizes. I went back through, you know, every invoice and looked at what ad sizes were published and had them do a bid based on that. And so based on those findings, the journal was much cheaper than we're currently paying or even that the bid was submitted to us for, from the Daily Times. And so based on, you know, working with Mr. Hayes and then also working with our two departments who do the most publishing, to make sure that timelines worked for them so that we made sure we met legal requirements and those kind of things, because of the bid and the price in general, that's why we're making the recommendation to switch newspaper record.
Any questions for Ms. Behrens? Any clarification, Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir.
My citizen speaker.
Nisi Bell.
Ms. Bell.
Mayor hearing, council. My name is Nisi Bell, I am the Vice President of Southern Newspapers Incorporated, which owns the Kerrville Daily Times. I'm also the former publisher of the Kerrville Daily Times. I started my career with the Kerrville Daily Times in 1979. So the newspaper is very dear to my heart. I understand that we messed up. We gave the city the wrong legal rates, and when they asked for them, the person that gave them, gave them the rates as open rates that were on our rate card, and any legal rate is entitled to the lowest rate that is on our rate card. Our fault, we messed up. The lady that was doing it didn't understand what she was doing, y'all even gave us an extension to do it, and we still messed up. So that's on us. And your minds are probably completely already made up about this, that's fine, again, it was our fault. Tammy's paper is a great paper, you're not going to go wrong by going into her paper at all, she has a very good paper. But just so you know, if the rates were true, if the rates are truly the issue here, the correct rate that you should be receiving from us is lower than any other rate that you would receive in the area. Also, keep in mind, if you have any legal ads that run two to three consecutive times by law, it's going to take several weeks to fulfill that obligation, whereas in the Times, it can get done in just a couple of days. If the issue is motivated by anything other than cost, please remember that the Kerrville Times has worked very closely with the city for over 120 years on all their legal ads and other things. Not only is our print production, our print product delivered to more homes than anyone else in Kerrville, from June of last year to June of this year, we had over 2 million page views and 427,000 users on our website. Our most popular categories are our e-dition and classified where the legal notices are printed. The greater reach provides the taxpayers with the greatest transparency, and transparency leads to trust, and trust is probably the most essential ingredient for community leadership and community service. Obviously, when a government entity chooses to publish notices in a smaller publication, they give the appearance of attempting to hide their actions, and that destroys public trust. And just for the record, despite what others are saying, and the rumors that are being spread, and the out and out lies that are being told, we are not going out of business. We have closed our printing press. We did that because the press is old, it was built in 1959, we could not find parts for it anymore, in order to upgrade it would cost us millions of dollars. So we decided to sell our, to get rid of it, we didn't even sell it, we just got rid of it, we junked it. So, and it, it doesn't matter where your paper is printed, the two other papers in Kerr County are printed in San Antonio, and heck, the San Antonio Express News is printed in Houston now. So it doesn't matter where your paper is printed, it doesn't matter if there's a press or not. Then that left us with this huge building that we had to heat and air, we had to pay taxes on, we had to pay insurance on. By moving our location, it helps for us to fit into a better location, and it's going to be saving us over $200,000 a year. I think any good businessperson would make the same decision. Doesn't mean we're going out of business. If you look at any bank, they don't need the same footprint that they used to have because of their services and the way they're designed. They go to a smaller footprint, and we're actually moving into a bank building. We were moving today, that was our, our day to move. But the Kerrville Daily Times is not going anywhere. We are committed to this community as we always have been, and we'll be here for a lot longer than anybody else. And when all the other ones are gone, we will still be here. We will be having an open house very, very soon, and as soon as we get all settled in, we would, we would invite all of y'all to come out and see our new place, it's going to be lovely, it's going to be more convenient for everybody, and we just hope that you understand, we're not going out of business, we're here to stay. So, thank you.
And you've been with the paper long enough to remember, I vaguely remember the last time I sat in this chair, we routinely rotated between the Daily Times and the Mountain Sun as the official newspaper. It was a routine matter. I don't know that, that the decision today is based on rumors, just, we went out for a bid and the, the price was different. Okay. Any, any other discussion or questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion, please.
So I'll move that we approve, uh, resolution number 24-2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, I do have one comment. Ms. Behrens, we'll probably go out for bid again, won't we?
Yes.
Of course. All right. All those in favor, so vote. Unanimous. Thank you for coming tonight. 7B, Shelley.
Resolution number 25-2024, a resolution supporting the Blue Wood multi-family development to include the future waiver of the city's parkland dedication fees, building permit fees, and an agreement for tax abatement. We do have four citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Well, we have a presentation from the applicant tonight.
That is correct, yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Hornis.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Daniel Wheeler, Mr. Shay Byers, and the owner of the property currently, Mr. Crenwell, you are here. Mr. Wheeler, I believe, is going to give a presentation tonight, he's got a presentation for you as well. And with that, I will turn it over to them, and we are here to answer any questions after that discussion.
All right, please state your name and address for the record.
Over here or right here?
Wherever's convenient for you.
Is there a little clicker that I can do?
Oh, you don't get the clicker.
Extra charge.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Daniel Wheeler, I am with J Street Company, 16800 West Cove Drive, Addison, Texas. And I will turn your attention to the screen. We are proposing a new 273-unit multifamily development called The Blue Wood at Calo Boulevard and Holdsworth Drive. This is a market-rate multifamily development financed using the HUD 221D4 program, and we have secured a loan in the amount of $42,181,200. As I mentioned, this is a 273-unit Class A apartment project, total cost right around $55 million. Our target rent market is between 80% to 100% AMI of Kerr County. This community consists of one, two, and three-bedroom units, ranging on the small side of 588 square feet to the largest being 1,368. Within this community, you will find resort-style amenities, interior elevators, co-working spaces, on and on, onsite professional management, a mini-store, covered parking, and, and other amenities that one would come to expect with this type of institutional project that you would find in, in other markets. The community benefit, when we, when we laid out this project and our projections, 95% of all of our units will target the most underserved population segment, and that is those earning between the 80% and 100% area median income for Kerr County. We believe this would be a catalytic development for the Holdsworth Drive region, you know, with the sports complex across the street, the Croc Center down the way, and just the, you know, tremendous investment that's been made in this, in this region, we believe this project would be a catalyst. We feel that this captures, you know, return of investment on, on that aforementioned investment into infrastructure, renews community engagement by bringing residents at the doorstep of the sports facility, and again, the nearby Croc Center. We, J Street, we are experienced, local, Texas-born and raised, owner-operators with a long-term approach and vision. We're not a merchant builder, we don't build this and sell it, you know, in six months beyond stabilization. When we buy a project, we invest for, for a longer term, longer duration. A little bit about, because this, I'll reference this on the next slide, there are two existing communities that we consider true comps for our projects. The first is 1846 Luxury Living up the road in Fredericksburg. This is a recently delivered 234-unit facility completed in 2024, consisting of one and two-bedroom units. The second is one I'm sure you're all familiar with, the residences at the Landing. This is a 120-unit community with one, two, and three-bedroom units, and that was completed in 2021. So a little bit of, there's, there's a lot in this slide, I'll try to be, be brief. These are, you'll see on the right is a matrix with our proposed rents, and this is our proposed rents based on, again, dictated by the market, but these are our best estimation of what these proposed rents would, would start at. So in, in the blue bowl, those are our rents, in black is 1846 up in Fredericksburg, and in the green, I know it's hard to see, those are residences at the Landing. So as you can see, we, we are at the top, we're at the bottom, and everywhere in between, really speaking to, you know, us meeting, you know, the market and falling right, right in with where the market is. So our average rent on our 273 units, again, it's an average of $1,331. Again, our target rent market is between 80% and 100% of AMI. Those figures are derived from Novogradic, it's a third-party federally-used source to, to determine and, to determine the area median income. So the Kerr County area median income, 80% of the area median income for a one-person household is $48,400. The income needed to qualify for the Blue, the Blue Wood average rent, based on typical market is two and a half to three times gross income of that gross monthly rent. So at two and a half times gross monthly income to qualify, one would, one with earning a $39,930 a year would qualify for the average rent that we are, you know, proposing here at The Blue Wood of $1,331. Again, when, when we, you know, identified this site, you know, we really felt like this was sticking to the Kerrville 2050 plan. Again, a lot of investment has gone into the sports complex, the Croc Center, and the Holdsworth Drive, Calo Boulevard, infrastructure. So we feel like this project just continued along in maintaining, you know, that, that well-thought-out plan. Where we are, we have a loan commitment from our lender, I already mentioned that, we have our civil and building permits into the city for review. We have already received comments, we've been working with Drew and his team and city staff on addressing those comments. We have gone to market and have a soft commitment for our equity, which brings us to where we are now. We have gone out, we have done our homework, and the market dictated there was a gap, and after we pulled every lever, looked at everything that we could, we came to the city with this incentive request at, at the last possible moment, when we knew exactly what was, what was needed. And from here, if, if we are to receive this grant, then we would be breaking ground likely in late October, first of November, and it's a 24-month build schedule, and so 24 months from then, October of '27, we would have 273 units available on the ground. What we are asking is a, our ask, it consists of two pieces, it's a permit and fee waiver, and a city, a 10-year city tax reduction through a 380 agreement. And as you can see, the, the values broken out as such equate to just over $1 million. On the tax abatement, again, this is a little hard to see, but members of council, I believe you, you received this presentation ahead of time, so I assume you, you read over these figures. So what, what this looks like, our, our ask, based on our estimated taxable value, year one stabilized, or, excuse me, year one completed, would be roughly $25 million, and assuming a 3% growth rate year over year, then what we are asking is for roughly $50,000 to $60,000 in city tax abatements, which would mean that of the, of that, the city would be receiving $89,000 in year one as opposed to the 140, if there was, was no abatement. And that just continues 3%, you know, every year. So $51,000 year one, $67,000 year 10, all totaling roughly $589,000 is, is the total ask on the, on the tax abatement. So again, the ask is permit fee waivers and a city tax abatement. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to, to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Wheeler?
The only question I have, and it's probably silly, if you go back to the slide that has the comparisons between the Landing, okay, yes, that one.
Okay.
I, I just don't understand why your, your payment fee is such that a one-bedroom, one-bath with smaller square footage would actually be more rent than a one-bedroom with more square footage.
Could you point to where you're referencing specifically?
One bedroom, 30 units, 673 square feet, $1,233 a month. And right below it, you've got one bedroom, only two units.
I see that.
681 square feet for only $1,211. Why the difference there?
So when, when you lay out different floor plans, you have widgets that have to fit in a box, and there are certain units that, they're the same type of unit, but they're a little bit different because of where they fit in the building, and so there are certain changes that have to be made. I'm sorry?
It's the placement of that unit.
It's the placement.
Got it.
And so there are, there are some things, you know, the living room or the, the, the primary bedroom may not be as big or, you know, have a smaller window, thus, it could be a larger unit, but slightly discounted rent to account for something that, that they're possibly missing.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wheeler?
I have comments for us to share whenever...
I have a question for Mr. Rice. We had discussed earlier about a cap on the abatement at 520, his ask tonight is 589, what's the difference?
So, do you want to kind of speak to the, the initial ask and kind of where that came about? So we had talked before, we put the 520 in there, there was kind of a range in there, this was kind of their initial all-in on the, between the 520 and the 589. We had spoken with them, because the initial, very first initial ask on everything was a million total. And so as they were going through the numbers, they said, we just said, go ahead and put it all in there, and we'll get with council and give that range based off it. So it's really up to council's discretion on it, but the 520 was, and the, the million-dollar total was the initial, initial ask.
Any comments, Mr. Wheeler?
I, I think Dalton said it concisely. It's, it, this is just a range, and as we, from the, I'll say this, from the first presentation to this, you know, it was our understanding, working with Mr. Rice, that they wanted to see the details all laid out, and so we went back and put pen to paper, and this is an exact number, and so that's why there's, there's a little bit of difference, it's just, the first one was a range, this is the exact number, and so our ask is, is that range.
And so this is an estimate of over the 10-year period, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that is correct.
Mr. Hornis, come on in. Mr. Hornis, come on in.
Only if you need clarification on anything.
Well, what, if we come to a motion, I'm going to ask for a, for a cap on both the abatement amount and a cap on the permit, permit amount.
Yes, sir. That would be the recommendation, both for the dollar figure and for the number.
And we have different numbers now.
Staff recommendation would be for the fee waivers, which cumulatively come up to $480,000, and for the tax abatement over the 10 years at $520,000, which would put you at an even million.
Thank you. Was there another presentation tonight, or? We have citizen speakers, I know, but do we have any, anybody else make?
From, from the staff side, no, sir. Um, you know, with, with the numbers that Michael had presented, you know, with that and with what we're comfortable with, we agree, we were not, you know, prepared to present anything beyond, you know, the million, and so we're comfortable with the 480, 520.
All right, thank you, I think I understand that. We have citizen speakers.
Yes, sir. Bill Blackburn.
Dr. Blackburn.
Uh, Bill Blackburn, 809 Blue Bell. And I will tell you, I, I have not been following the progress of this particular project. Saw the article in today's, uh, day, Kerrville Daily Times, and then late afternoon, I realized it was coming up tonight, and I tried to call the city manager and council members, and you were in a workshop. And so I'm coming to this a little bit late, but let me say this, uh, in reading about a $1 million in incentives, 10-year tax abatement, waivers of, uh, parkland dedication fee, dedicated fees, waivers of building permits, and I realized, it's a HUD, HUD project, the city's limited to some of its, some of what it can restrict. Um, I'm concerned about precedence. Uh, this is a, a market-rate project, yes. The target is persons that are 80% of that median income, and I understand that and appreciate that, but it's market rate. Did we do incentives for Sanderel Ridge, Ridge Apartments on the Loop and Singing Winds? Will we do incentives for other apartment projects that are going to be coming before you? Um, yes, as mayor, 2018 to 2022, um, I was, along with the council, supported, uh, three tax-assisted units for veterans, seniors, and families, and I supported incentives for businesses like, uh, Kildare Mountain Manufacturing. When you see what that can do to this economy and the good jobs and benefits that it provides, and you see the return on investment, and I supported the initial Lennar Project, which is now well underway. Also, part of the reason of, of, of supporting some of those projects, particularly like Kildare is, at one time, we had 30% of our property taxes supplied by businesses and 70% by residences. That's not good. There needs to be a balance. And I will also say this, I initiated our Workforce Housing Task Force in 2019, and we were not surprised, but it was shocking how many people in this community could not afford to buy a home. And, and, and that, how those housing issues needed to be addressed. I am impressed tonight with the presentation that has been made, uh, by, in regard to Bluewood, and who they are intending to see in these apartments. But here is a concern that I have. There are regularly letters to the editor in our papers saying incentives are just giveaways, using the money of the citizens to just give away. There's one particular individual that just writes to both papers time after time. I don't want to, I don't want us to see incentives get a bad name. And so I trust you as a council, and you know that, I trust the city staff. If you say to me, "Bill, when we look at this and the provision of housing that is needed here, and that this is a good way to do it," I will support you. I just don't want to see the, the council and the city do anything to give incentives a bad name, because we need to continue to have the opportunity to use them and the citizen support for them. Thank you very much.
Nikki Keynes.
Hi, Nikki Keynes again. Um, I'm going back over, I have mostly questions tonight. Um, I reviewed the presentation that was available, um, online, and, um, the cost of the rent and the size of the apartments is a concern for me, because when you talk about the, the median cost of living, um, 1,200 or almost $1,300 for, for a month for a 600-square-foot apartment seems high, as well as the high end of 2,500 for a three-bedroom. I also noticed that, um, let's see, on the second slide, it said the city investment of 12 million. I don't know what that 12 million dollars from the city as an investment was, unless they're talking about that whole Holdsworth area, but what does that have to do with, um, with them? Um, another question I had was, uh, they did, uh, one of the, um, one of the whatchamacallits up there, uh, gave the total meaning, uh, a million, a little over a million dollars in incentives. Uh, I agree that if it's going to go on, it needs to be capped, because the, uh, the one that was published is also including what the county did, and the county yesterday did not, is not at a million. They capped it as well, at $200,000 less. So now we're talking about a 1,200, uh, anyway, we're talking about a gap, a 2,000, $200,000 gap. Um, and on the slide where it talks about where we are, it says that it's, um, a HUD, and they've already got their, uh, financing at 42 million, but it also says that there are soft commitments of 13 million. What happens if that 13 million falls through? What kind of commitment is the city making to this developer if this falls through? I know there was something else, but I did agree, uh, much with, uh, Mr. What, Mr. Blackburn said, as far as giving out incentives over and over. We've been seeing it a lot lately, and it, it makes me think of public-private partnerships, and I really think the city should not be in the business of incentivizing everybody that comes here. Thank you.
George Brudy.
Mr. Brudy.
George Brudy, 1616 Glen Road. Um, if you don't mind giving my address. So, um, basically, I mean, they answered one of my questions, which is what HUD program were they utilizing to finance with, because, um, that was kind of a concern of mine. As a general rule, though, I, I mean, I'm not really for tax abatements, period, but you should never actually do them for residential property. The simple fact is, property taxes for residential property are straight, dollar-for-dollar paying for cost of services to serve that property. That's how it's done. And so when you're giving away that, um, for any amount, um, it'd be kind of like if you owned a barbecue restaurant, and you wanted more customers to come in, and you gave a discount that's below cost of serving that food, that's at a loss. That's what property taxes are, and when you give any away, that's what it is. So that's, that's just a, a bad move financially altogether. And we keep bringing these up. It seems like the, um, modus operandi of how we're going to get this housing problem solved is to give away public money, which doesn't do anything but raise the, the cost of living on everybody. So, uh, a couple of questions. Is the, it, it appears that J Street is not actually the developer or the owner of the land, is that correct? You're just, you guys just the, um, you can end up being a property management company, but you're not actually developing the property, is that correct? You know, like, you can just answer.
That's not correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, um, the, uh, they mentioned at the county that they're going to be around for a long time, and they also mentioned that it would be here five or 10 years. If, if you, if we give public incentive to a development property, I think it would be fair to ask that the agreement require that if they flip it in X number of years, that a portion, if not all of that incentive comes back. Because it appears that, um, as it was stated at the county, that their, their financing is a little bit tight, because when they were asked if they could cut it, uh, their, their ask by 300,000, the answer was, no, we probably wouldn't be able to do the project. This is a quoted, stated as being a $55 million investment. If you can't cut 300,000 out of the development just to make that incentive work, then there's probably other problems going on with it. And as far as affordability, um, yes, we all need how, we need affordable housing. This is anything but affordable. They, they're using a, a model, uh, I didn't realize it until tonight, they're saying, you qualify for these apartments if you make 2.5 times as much, uh, as the rent in your gross. Well, that's, that's essentially a, um, saying that your housing cost, your rent cost, not your housing, because it doesn't include utilities, would be 40% of your gross. HUD actually uses 30%. So this is still cost-burdening people to the tune of, um, something that is beyond affordability. Yes, people are going to squeeze out, do whatever they can to live somewhere, I get that, but, um, and then the last thing is, we keep talking as this, this is free, um, to the community. Um, you know, we're giving away money that we didn't have already. This land, right now, produces, let's just say it produces zero property tax, okay? But it also produces no cost burden to the services being rendered there, because there's nothing happening. When you add 273 units and the roughly 600 people that are going to be moving into that, these are new citizens, you're adding a cost of service to the bottom line. And nowhere in this, it would be nice to see an estimate, just an estimate, of what that cost would be, so you could balance that out when you're creating this agreement. Thanks.
Peggy McKay.
Ms. McKay.
Peggy McKay, Kerrville. Mr. Blackburn, I agree about the incentives, and particularly when he mentioned the 30, 70% of who carries the burden of the taxes, it's the residents, it's not the commercial. And if we keep giving incentives, won't that percentage change? I didn't have a copy of that, uh, the rent, uh, and the comparison, so it kind of changes what I was going to say. However, in the resolution, there are three whereas's, and one says the developer is seeking incentives with the city and the county, again, to overcome various economic conditions. And then in their, uh, printout on the economics, number four mentioned a problem that they were having because of the frozen capital markets, and the lenders and investors, um, are mobilized by market instability. Well, when I hear market instability, it does not give me confidence that I want to put my money there. And it may be premature, perhaps the project's a good one, it's a beautiful one, as presented, but market-wise, economy, I question whether this is the right time to do that. And also, since we mentioned workforce, uh, housing, I would like to ask why Kerrville has never investigated or, um, got information, a seminar, whatever, on successful, uh, manufactured housing, such as we have for the over 55 in Ingram Oaks, Rio Robles, uh, Windmill Ridge. It looks like these people could get into something for this price, maybe less, as a starter home. And then when they build up their, in their savings, go into the next step, which is how, way back when, it used to be done that way. I would like to see us help these people, but I don't like us to see them burdened to get into something that looks good at the beginning, but when you do your monthly budget, you're worried, can you make it? Will you have money for food, any medical costs? And I think, uh, we could get, I would like to see some type of a committee look into manufacturing communities for the workforce people, so that they would have, uh, a, a beautiful place to live, something they could handle economically, and use that to step up to their next home. Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
All right. What I'd like to do now, unless we have a question staff, is counsel comment. Are you ready?
All right, I did just a little bit of research to check supply and demand. I was interested in knowing if we're, if we're attempting to cover all the needs, income levels, um, that are out there, and it appears that we are. Just down the street from, uh, Bluewood is the reserves on Holdsworth, 100% leased. Um, the rent, the, the square footages are less, the rents are less, but they have a waiting list that they've had almost since they opened. Uh, if you go to, if you look at the, the VA, that we just, the Freedom Path, that we just approved, the second phase of that, that is another solution to someone who might not fit this profile, but has their needs met, if they're VA, and once that, once they fill it with veterans, they do open it up to the general public. But on the other side of that coin, if you're going to look at this, this type of product, all of those other similar comparable products are leased. So that tells you there is a market out there. I, I checked with, um, the Landing, I checked with the, uh, apartments across from the, next to the movie theater and across the street, I think it's called Verdi, Verdi River Hills Apartments. Uh, just so happened, I was getting my teeth cleaned today, and, uh, my technician lives in the Verdi River Apartments, and she's on the third floor, she's lived there seven years, and it, she says it's 100% leased. And it's mostly to, uh, a different crowd, it's 55 and older. The same people who own the reserves on Holdsworth own the 55 and older complex on Lehman. It is also 100, 100% leased, 42 units, not a large complex, but it, it appears that there is, it isn't going to sit empty, which is what I wanted to know, is are we missing, I don't think we're missing an opportunity to serve another market of people, but at the same time, we should also continue to think about the other market that's out there, and I believe it is out there. So that was my job, was to try to go see if, if you had the product tomorrow, could you lease it? And I, I think you could for these rates. And mo, a lot of our employees that work here in Kerrville are going straight to Fredericksburg where some of that product is. So, you know, I know there's a lot of details to work out, but I think I, I support the product, I support the project, uh, and I think we just have to make sure we don't overtax our, our system. I know, I think the Landing had incentives, and that, you know, they, they're, they've been 100% leased since three or four years now. Think, I think they have a two-year waiting list. So it's hard to find something that's working now that didn't have some type of incentive. Not, not that we want to throw that around fragil, flagrantly, but I mean, at the same time, we have to make some, we have to have some product. And I know Tim Rice' letter to us from Peterson was describing the exact person who would be a rental, uh, in this project. So if you want your cardiologist to have an assistant living here in Kerrville, you, you might, it's just, they, maybe they're not ready for a home, but this is the kind of project they would probably rent in. So there's a market, but that's my two cents, and.
Well, you said everything I was going to say.
I was pleased to see that some of these other, uh, projects, like the reserves on Holdsworth, I don't know if you've seen it, because you can't see it very well from Holdsworth, very nice.
Yeah.
I mean, they have, they don't have covered parking, but I mean, they have a great playground, they, um, they have three stories. Um, they're right close to the Crock, which this would be too. So I mean, I think, I think Holdsworth is coming alive.
Yeah.
What you said two meetings ago about the walkability, uh, of, of other amenities, so.
Yeah, and you know, Kerrville has done a really, really good job of, of seeking out, uh, builders that can do affordable housing for our, um, run-of-the-mill workers. I mean, our, our Buzzies BBQ workers, you know, that couldn't afford a $1,300 a month of, you know, apartment. And, but it's that trickle-down effect, because there is a market for, um, apartments in that price range. You're going to find your nurses, you're going to find your teachers, you're going to find your police officers and your firefighters. That's the market that's going to be able to afford those apartments, and they can move out of the apartments that the Buzzies BBQ workers can afford to pay for and get in. workers can afford to pay for, and get in something that's more in their income range. I think it is a good walkability area, central to, you know, Central City. I know Central City technically is where the new complex is going to be, but there's a lot of, I've noticed a lot of people walking and riding bikes, and I expect the more development that goes on out at Holesworth will bring more people out walking.
And I did some research on your company, going back to 2007. I mean, here's the statistics. 5,000 units that you're managing now. You have 3 million square feet of office space that you manage. You're all over the country. You have an, you want to establish a bulkhead here in Curville. It's what you said at the county meeting. And I like the fact you're not going to build and develop and leave, or even partner and leave, because it's just like anything else. You want onsite the finishing product. And I like to hear that. So if I thought it didn't have a really great chance of renting, I would probably not be for it. But I think it does, so.
Well, and anybody that can rent here, and not in Fredericksburg, or not in Bernie, or not in Fair, you know, they will be spending their money here, and they will be utilizing our amenities here and our businesses. And, you know, I see a benefit there. I also see a benefit with future property tax revenues.
Harris?
I've said it before, I'll preach it still. I said it when I was running for this position. It's, when I met my wife, who just retired from the city, she lived in Bernie, because there was nowhere to live in Curville. There wasn't. She lived there. What was here in Curville, a single police officer could not afford. You know, salaries have come a long way, people are making more money and things, but I always said, if you build it, they will come. They're already here. They just need somewhere to live. The other thing they'll do is instead of going and taking your check that you're making from the city of Curville, or from Buzzies, or Kildare, or Moonier, whoever you want to say in Curville, and they go to Bernie, well, that money, that Curville money, is leaving Curville. It's not here. So it's, we have a drastic need for housing, affordable housing, something. It's some of these rents, and I'm not just picking on y'all, because rents, rent. I mean, when I moved to Curville, I rented a two-bedroom, one-bathroom house that was 795 square feet, and I was paying $900 a month for it, and that was in 2006, okay? Rent prices now are mortgage payments. But that's mortgage payments from when we had great interest rates, you know, 3%, 2.5% interest rates on a $210,000 house, and you know, with everything escrowed, you're paying about $1470 a month. Now you're looking at apartments that are, you know, 2,500. Well, that's just the new norm. And I hate to say it that way, but I see it. And Ms. McKay hit on what you said a while ago, because I look at it, Mr. McKinney knows what I'm talking about, because being in the banking business, being in the lending business, it's really hard to lend on manufactured housing. It's really difficult. It's, we do it, people do it, there's places that do it, but the restrictions that they have on that, it makes it almost impossible to lend money on. So anyway, it's a drastically needed thing that we have here. Incentives, part permits, and all the fees that we're talking about waiving, that's not real cash that we're going to really see. It's just numbers. It's things that we can waive to incentivize people to build residence for our citizens. Thank you.
McKinney?
Well, when you go last, a lot of it's been already talked about. But I agree. I think that this, I mean, this seems like a very quality product, and it's not necessarily luxurious, you know, like we're subsidizing some sort of, you know, over-the-top kind of a venture, but the price, even if it's the $39,000, it's really $44,000 or something for salary anymore, married couple, or a lot of people that would fit in that, nurses, and I'm sure make that kind of money. So it's, and I think, brought up that, yes, you know, this is a market, really, that that price range is something that's not being addressed. And so I think it really fills a hole. I understand concern about incentives. I think most of the incentives we have done, like for an arm, whatever, was really maybe a clear effort to cap the pricing of the homes. And there's a cap there. We have restrictions about that here. But it's not near the same amount of money either. And we're in such desperate need for the housing that I think this is not just a huge amount of money to make sure that this project gets, we bring it here, and we bring the people, we bring the sales tax income, and the economic activity for the businesses in town and all that. So I think, I think it's a good use, a reasonable amount of money for the project.
Before I ask for a motion, I would like that motion to include a cap on the abatement at $520,000, and a cap on permit fees at $480,000.
Perfectly good.
All right. Does anyone want to make such?
Do you want to make that motion?
I can make the motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, you know, before you proceed, I just want, I'm going to try to add complications to this. You've got a resolution, so that's got to be part of your motion, to adopt the resolution.
The motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2524.
Right. And then, if you didn't want to include all that, and I'm not suggesting you can't, but if you don't want to, we've heard you, and the resolution says.
I want to say it explicitly.
Okay.
With a cap on the abatement amount at $520,000, and a cap on permit waivers at $480,000.
I would so move to approve the Resolution 25-2024, whether that amendment.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second in discussion. All those in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. All right. There's no reason to go into executive session, but are there items for future agendas? Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. I do have a item for future agenda item. I talked to Ashley, she's not here anymore. But we are such a veteran, we're such a, well, I was waiting to have everybody's attention when I spoke. We are a veteran-friendly, highest veteran population per capita in the state of Texas. Every year, the Memorial Day program that keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger across the street is funded and taken care of by the county. I would like to put on a future agenda item for a resolution to be passed by the City Council of Curville, that for the Veterans Day Parade application, the fees and the permits, we waive all the fees for that.
I'll co-sponsor that with you.
Thank you.
We're all in.
All right. So that'll be on a future agenda?
That was way too easy, so.
Anybody else have a future agenda item? I'm going to tread where angels fear to go. I believe that we should have a resolution from the City Council weighing in on whether there should be a statue of Johnny Manziel on Peterson Plaza. The school board weighed in on property that they own. We don't own Peterson Plaza. But I think we ought to have a discussion and a vote on whether we feel a statue of Johnny Manziel in front of City Hall is appropriate. And it'll be non-binary, because we don't own the property. I think we should at least be public in either our support or not support of such a statue.
Okay with that.
Anybody else sponsor with you? I'd like that on a future agenda, please. Anything else? All right. We didn't break a record tonight, but I'm adjourning the meeting at 7:39.